Meeting to order. This meeting to order now at seven thirty seven P M. Please join me. I'm standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you please do the roll call? All right, trustee Klein. Trustee Goak. That's in. Trustee Francis.
Here.
Trustee Tyson.
Here.
Supervisor Crowder.
Here. You can use the look at assessor.
Oh, we don't need, I guess, assessor, Katsburg.
Here.
And then highway commissioner.
Here. And then tax electors.
Tax electors, David Scriven Young.
Then we're here. Perfect. Thank you. So we have three members of the five of the board. So we do have a quorum. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, public comment. If I folks up for public comment, please note that your public comment is limited to three minutes.
Hi, I'm today. I'm actually New Commercial Deputy here at Newland. I know last meeting there was a lot of disparity about the assessorship and her payroll. So, and there was just a couple of things I wanted to comment on. One of the main things that I really want to make a point of is it's not even just about the money. It's a lot to do with, we feel very underappreciated. If you look at the budget for all the departments, it's the assessors that's the lowest. It was lowest asking to be raised, but none of the other budgets were scrutinized. Michael didn't change anybody else's budget, just Mary's. We are the lowest paid in this whole building. And I'm not saying that nobody else doesn't deserve what they they deserve. They know everybody deserves what they're getting. I'm not saying people are being overpaid. But why are we so much taken for granted? Why are we paid so little and thought so lowly of? Even the fact of the example of this meeting being the budget meeting being waiting oddly till June. I don't think that was a tactical move so that there'd only be thirty days to be able to approve it before the deadline. When April first is when the budget was supposed to be done. So you're making your employees wait all the way till July to be backpaid for what their increases should be. There was plenty of time. Mary had her stuff turned in by January. So I also think that's a little disrespectful to the employees. Michael did a lot of research and I really appreciate the fact that he did do that and did just come out with just an answer. But the research is very limited and I feel like it's kind of leaning towards one direction. He, um, it's on Mary's some payroll statistics for other townships. But the townships are in Crete, Jackson, I mean, these are very small townships. Jackson is two thousand parcels. We have thirty one thousand. We're also in totally different demographics. However, he neglected to include anything from the good township or from Naperville, which is right next to us. Our closest township is Joliet. He has on here that the chief deputy assessor is making seventy six thousand eight hundred ninety nine. There's nothing in here about Paula Waller, who I found on the Joliet website. She's their deputy assessor and in twenty twenty three to twenty four, she was making sixty nine nine oh eight. Twenty two to twenty three, she was making sixty three five five three. That was totally neglected to put in. For twenty five to twenty six, the assessor salaries budget is four hundred and seventy thousand. That's very similar to what Mary's asking. It's actually a little bit more. And they are the closest in similarity as far as parcels, not even in demographic. They have thirty one thousand eighty two parcels. We have thirty one thousand sixty one. So they're the most similar to us, but they're not even in the higher demographic as they are. It's Joliet. You know, there's the east side of Joliet. It's just the pay scale is not the same as it would be here. If you worked at McDonald's and Joliet, you're going to make a lot less than you would if you were in Naperville. You have to look at proximity. So, Michael, I do appreciate the work you did, but I think we need to kind of look at it a little bit differently.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you mean? Any additional public comments?
Um, before you start my three minutes out, do you have your policy for public comment somewhere that we can see? Is it on your website?
I believe it's on the website and it's posted in the agenda every meeting and I've.
Your pu- your public comment policy?
Yeah, just right here. It's limited to one three minute comment per person.
That's all your policy says is that each person, that's all your policy written.
If you'd like the full policy, feel free to reach out to the office and we'll get it to you.
I was just asking if you had it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So my comment would be about the timing of when things are posted. I believe last time you had other things besides just the agenda and the whatever is your budget thing, the ordinances, the resolutions are online. We could see it's really hard to give meaningful comment or, you know, ideas or anything when you don't put everything online for people to see. You've got an appointment of a deputy supervisor here on your agenda. And I did notice for payroll, a new name that I haven't seen, an Angel Contreras. I'm guessing, again, I just have to assume because I don't see your ordinances or resolutions, that that may be your deputy supervisor. That's coming into play. I did, you know, a little Google on him. I'm hoping it's not the same Angel Contreras that was the Joliet Township Supervisor who now does a felon with his DUIs. I also saw that there was the ordinance for the highway commissioner's salary payments. I mean, I'm curious about that. Again, not being able to see what the ordinance is, it's hard to give a comment about, you know, anything about that's going on. I think it's really rude that your highway commissioner has three phones on the desk and he's on every one of them right now during the meeting, but that's just me personally. He can do what he wants and evidently that's acceptable to the board. And then I also believe, hmm, I think something else. Wouldn't stop with that, but it would be nice if we could see all this information before the meeting so that we could give meaningful comments. And I assume that your board gets this information more than one or two days before like the prior board was getting because they couldn't even look at what was being discussed with the meeting. But that's a good strategy though. I'll give it to you. Thank you.
Any additional public comment before moving on? Okay, hearing none. First item under approval of minutes, I am actually going to ask that we table this one. The reason being is that three of our four trustees would not have been at that meeting. So we're going to make sure you have the video copy of that before approving the minutes. So I am going to move to table the approval of May eighth, twenty twenty five regular meeting minutes to our next regular meeting. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
And then can you do a roll call on that, please, Terry?
Trustee Francis.
Yes.
Trustee Tyson.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, yeah.
Didn't go where you were.
No, no, I had to check to make sure I was at that meeting on the eighth. Yes, I was there.
Supervisor Crowder.
Yes.
I'm legit.
All right, so there we go. Three O, next item on the agenda, approval of the May twenty second, twenty twenty five special meeting minutes. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Seven.
Second.
I was not at that meeting.
I will second it then. Um, well, so here's what we're going to do. We'll table this one to next month as well, our until if another trustee comes in because we do need a three vote approval before we can pass anything. So with that being said, I am going to motion to table the approval of May twenty second, twenty twenty five special meeting minutes for our next regular meeting. Can I get a second, please? And we'll do a roll call on that, please.
Trustee Francis. Trustee Tyson.
Yes.
Supervisor Crown.
Yes. Okay, next item on the agenda, discussion of ordinance number twenty five dash two dash O town budget. I am going to allow the trustees to ask any additional questions if you have any. Since our last meeting, I will just make one comment. As was referenced earlier with regards to assessor's office salaries, everything that on there was provided directly by the townships. So if a individual is not reflected in there, that is because that specific township did not disclose that information. All of these came directly from the townships themselves. This was not pulled from the internet or anything like that. So just making that note on there. We also had not just little townships on here, but we do also have Troy, Plainfield, Joliet, Frankfurt Townships on here, Lockport Township. And then DuPage Township is not on here yet and they'll be on there prior to the final approval. But my understanding was they had not yet responded to the request that was made. And that concludes my comments that I had for this month with regards to that. Do the trustees have any additional comments or questions before we move on to the next item? Okay, hearing none. Next item on the agenda, discussion of ordinance number twenty five dash three dash O highway budget. Any questions on the highway budget since our last meeting?
No.
Okay, hearing none. Next item on our agenda, we're going to go on to our presentation by GoGo. I believe we have Kevin Strauss. Perfect.
Yes, sir. Can you hear me okay?
Okay. I'm going to turn off more light so you can see a little bit better.
And I'm sorry, my camera's on the fritz, but that is an image of me to replace the camera. There we go. The important stuff's on the screen. And Terry, thanks so much. So for anyone that doesn't know, we're going to look at today, take you through a brief demo of our product that does two major things. Number one, help the township push information out in bulk to folks in the community. Things like road closures, community events, council meeting announcements, spoil water advisories and so on and so forth. And then we're also going to look at service request management, which is putting some process around the flow of residents reporting different problems and concerns to the township, potholes, code enforcement violations, those sorts of things. And a easier way for the township staff to track and manage them. For both of these products, the focal point from the residence perspective, we would actually build a Wheatland Township branded mobile app for your residents to download. Branded meaning y'all name it whatever you'd like, and then that's how you'll promote this whole service to the community. So a couple of examples in Illinois, this is Highland, the city of Highland, they call their app Highland Happenings. This is the city of Kankakee, they call their app Can Connect. This is the village of Homewood, they call their app Home Sweet Homewood. If you typed any of these into the app store on your respective phones, they'll come right up. Village of Bourbon A, My Bourbon Aid, they call it. It's like, we'll work with you to come up with a name that you'd like. We have graphics folks, so we can get some graphics that you'd like. And basically the story we'd want to help you tell to the resident would be a three parter. If you live here in the community, take three seconds, go through our new app on your phone. Number one, all sorts of useful township info right at your fingertips. And that's all these different buttons that you see here. These are called applets. You could have as few or as many as you'd like. And the purpose of these buttons is kind of twofold. Number one, it just kind of logically makes sense that if you put out an app with the township's name on it, it should probably contain some relevant and useful township information. And then secondarily, as y'all might be aware, municipal websites in general just have a lot of stuff on them because I can come here and find out literally anything that the township is involved in, and that's how it's supposed to be. So the app is your opportunity to go through and say, hey, of all these pages, what are the four, six, eight, ten, whatever number it ends up being that we know people most frequently want access to? And let's make them one tap accessible here in the app. So for example, it says pay my water bill. We're not a water billing vendor. When I hit this button, it shortcuts me right to that vendor portal, nice neat here in the app. So as a resident, I can quickly pay and do my thing. And when I'm done, I'm back to the home screen. Or they've got a button that says agendas and minutes, literally shortcuts me to the page of the website that has all the agendas and minutes hosted. When I'm done, I'm back to the home screen. So any page of y'all's site, we can essentially extract and make one tap accessible here in the app. And then we could also round it out with like, if you wanted to have like a click to dial directory of phone numbers, we could do something like that. Or if you wanted to highlight people, a lot of customers do like the current elected officials, names, pictures, bios, contact info, if you want to provide it, along with even any locations in the township. Things like parks, walking trails, municipal facilities, I could see not only a listing of them, but I could see where they are. And then kind of pick one and get like picture, description of services, hours, location. So just all things again, it's like, hey, if you live here in the community, throw our app on your phone. It's a great starting point with these buttons for a lot of the more, you know, common information that people seek from us. The second reason to have the app would be, once it's on my device, the township can deliver me real time push alert updates for all sorts of stuff going on. So this is the mass sending of information. These are real custom apps, just to give you an idea of what other customers are sending within the last like hour or two. We've got everything from office closures, volunteers are needed, traffic accidents, a summer concert series, public safety announcements, farmers markets. What else we got? Press releases, council meeting announcements and so on and so forth. And to create and send one of these is really, really simple. The software that the township staff would use is fully web based. And writing a new message to send is basically like writing an email. For time sake, for the presentation, I've got one already written that I'm going to use. I wrote up a road closure. I gave it a headline, a tagline, and then in the body of the message, we do unlimited characters and unlimited formatting. So multiple images, different sized headings, bulleted lists, numbered lists, links to other websites, can write up as long of a message as I'd like. Once it's done, I could either send it out immediately or pre-schedule it to go out later. You can even target by area. So this will pull up a map of the township. And we could either use like pre-existing geographic boundaries, like your council districts and things like that. And you could also just free form draw as well. So if you knew you needed to target like a specific neighborhood, you know, I could draw like a polygon or a circle or a square type shape, label it, you know, use it again later and target only a specific area. And then in terms of where it can go, you've got push alert to anyone that has the Wheatland Township app on their phone, Apple or Android, email, and then social media sharing. I didn't get to check. I think y'all use a Facebook page. Is that right? Are you using that kind of Facebook currently or not so much?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Excellent. And to a Facebook as well. So watch, I'll hit send. It's going to go out to all those channels. So the first one would be the push alert. So I'm going about my day. I've got your app on my device. I'm going to see here in just a second, right underneath the time, what would be your app name? Your app icon pops up on my phone, in this case telling me there's a road closure. I literally just tap on the push alert. And then that's so simple and easy. Here's how that would look like for me as a resident. Second channel is an email. So if I had an email address on with you guys for this, I got this exact message in an email would look like this. And then we also did the share to Facebook. When I hit send, it opened a Facebook tab, opened a post on y'all's account, pasted a link to the message in there. I literally just hit the share button. And now that would be up on your page. And what we've done is coded the links in a way where Facebook will pick up a preview of it. So like if I was scrolling through your feed, like you'd pop up, I'd pop up, you'd pop up in my feed, hopefully. If I followed your account, it'd always have a preview of the link, message headline, message tagline and a little image preview. And if I want to read more, I just click on it and it's a publicly shareable, publicly accessible version of the message, viewable for anyone that has access to a web browser and an internet connection. So that's your kind of mass communications, pushing the information out in bulk. Then the third reason to have the app is the, what we call CRM, the request management. So for this module, I like to kind of mentally break it down to three pieces. You've got two resident facing pieces for submission of issues and then the staff software for tracking and managing the work. So the first one here is for the submission through the app. So if I wanted to report something to you, I hit start request. We would list out here different types of issues that you want people to report. Things like potholes, tall grass and weeds, graffiti, et cetera, et cetera. And we'll work with you to define what these are. I simply picked the one I want to put in. It goes, do you have any pictures? I could say no, I could open my camera and snap a few. More commonly, what we see is people have already taken the photos. So they grab a few of them out of the camera roll. And then what the app does is pulls the location coordinates right off the data in the photo and goes, that's where this issue is located. While simultaneously doing that, it goes, are there any potential duplicates for this? So the township doesn't get multiple requests for the same thing. And as a resident, it shows me what it thinks is a duplicate. I could actually follow it and get status updates and get notified when it's completed without having to actually submit an additional request to you guys for that. Um, in terms of what else I fill out, totally up to you and done on a per topic basis. So like what I ask and require of someone to report tall grass might be very different than what we ask and require of them to report a pothole. So everything is configured on a per topic basis. Do I require a photo attachment? Do I need their contact info? Can they remain anonymous? What types of questions do I ask? All these things will vary based on the type of thing being reported. Boom. Thanks for my submission. It also tells me I could track the status of my request using the track request button. So this is not everything that was open in the township. It's just my personal service history. Here's a tall grass complaint. Currently sitting in an open status. We'll watch as this gets adjusted and changed in the next like five minutes as we work the issue from start to finish on the staff side. Okay, sticking a pin in that for a sec. The second resident facing piece is to live in y'all's website. So you want to have a button on here that'll say like, report a concern, you know, or something like that. And when clicked on, we'll stay on your website, but instead of seeing like this content in the middle, we're going to give you what's called an iframe to live right in there. And this right here is from our software on one of our customer sites. Most requested down the right hand side based on what people are asking you for. Also searchable as well. And the whole purpose of this is just another option for residents. The app is not a requirement. If you hit the township's website, you'll be able to use this all the same. And this is what it would look like to put one of these in through the web. Very similar to what we did on the phone. See, I've got the map with the boundary, can move the location. Great example of custom fieldwork. This is a tree maintenance request. So they have a required field called tree issue, and then they've given me a few choices to indicate what's wrong. I would presume so that when they send a crew out, they send the correct crew with the correct tools and equipment to fix it instead of going back and forth multiple times. So it's really a great job by them. Type in my description, add my photos and hit submit. So very simple, very easy, very similar to what we did on the phone, just kind of like optimized for folks using the browser. Now, the way we would ideally set this up, when we work with you to define the types of things that could be reported, we also predetermined who those get assigned to. So the concept is route them right to the folks in the township that are responsible for handling those types of issues. And as a staff member, I would know I have something new to work on because I get this email. Hey, you've been assigned a new request and it tells me a bunch of information about it and has a link that says click here to access. And that's how we'll get into the third piece of this, the staff facing software for tracking and managing the work. Same web based system we were working in before to write the notification is just a different area. It's such an easy system to use. By the way, this is the staff interface, just to, so we're on the same page. There's only really two screens for each of us to learn. One of them is what you're looking at here, which is a list of open issues. Which issues you see in the list are very much dependent on your role at the township. So it's rights or permissions based software. Also, you'll notice these due dates running down this column. These are based on service goals you could set for each item. So you have some sort of time measurement. I can know if you're comfortable or not with how long they're taking. And then we could do things like send reminder emails and whatever increments of days you want, you know, as they're coming due. Or even like build out different custom escalations where we can email notify different township staff members if things happen to go more incremental days overdue. So just like lots of different ways to make the information come to you based on your specific criteria. Screen number two is the detail of an open item, open work order, open ticket, whatever vocabulary, you know, you'd prefer. Lots of useful stuff here. At the top, I've got the customer info. So if I had collected the resident's contact information when they submitted the request, I not only see that here, but we do a full service history for each resident. So that they get you on the phone and you're all chatting back and forth. You could easily recall things they've interacted with you on previously, make it nice and easy to do that. I could see it's a tall grass complaint entered via the iPhone app. Here's the location of the issue and we also do a full service history by location. So here's all the other items we worked on at this specific address. You know, quick trend spotting, maybe we didn't notice so much illegal dumping happening here. And we want to ask the PD to roll a carbine more often or wow, I didn't realize we did so much patchwork, you know, at this address and maybe we want to take a different tack. So just ways to kind of spot quick trends. Then you have these different statuses. You could have whatever statuses you want. You could label them whatever you'd like. It's not only a great way for you to sort your work and like a little, you know, because there's definitely some nuance between things being open and closed. But it's another great way for us to help you have things happen automatically. One of the ones people love is giving like an Amazon like service to the resident. So they reported the issue. They got a little, hey, thanks for your submission confirmation. And then when you're working on it, let's say I have a status called scheduled. Maybe this just means we're going to get to it like this week or whatever. When I set this to that and save it, I have my software setup where that triggers an automated message that goes out to the resident to give them an update, either via push alert or email. So as the resident, I got this push alert, hey, there's a message for you about the tall grass issue. And then here I get a little tag of scheduled and a nice message from the department working on it. That's very much reflective of the current status of the item. So the goal is to keep the two sides connected without adding workload to township staff because you want to definitely have your time free to actually go and work on the issues and not sit here in the software. But then without having any additional work to keep the resident informed, keep everybody on the same page. Some other things you can do. Maybe you have a question for the customer, like we don't see what they saw when they reported it. We want to ask them a question. I can type a question and send it through here. And I can go ahead and hit send to customer. I could even include like a photo attachment or two if I want, and I could send that out to the resident. And when I do that, they'll get that in a push alert or an email to which they could either A, just reply to the email. Or if they were using the app, they could actually write back to you right through here. Any back and forth you'll have is threaded so the requester can see what they've discussed with you. And then maybe more importantly, if I was to go back to the actual work ticket, any back and forth you'll have is automatically logged and captured here in the software with this green color indicating a staff to resident or resident back to staff type of interaction. I can also collab with coworkers. So maybe I want to offer some assistance or ask for some assistance. These are my coworkers in the system based on my user permissions. So I can, you know, message them, we can message back and forth. That'll get captured here in a yellow color with the time and user stamps. And then sometimes as the person working on this, I just need to leave some notes. The notes are internal. They're just for me and the other staff that are working on this item. Anything we may or may not need to know logged and captured in a gray color. I always like to mention, you will not use all of these things on every item that y'all work on. There are proverbial tools in the toolbox, you know, should the situation call for it. Once you're done working on this, there's a section called reason closed. And this is text that goes back out to the resident to tell them why we're closing this out. And you could always free form type of response for each one. But more commonly, our customers will create canned responses that are very specific to the issue they fixed. It's a lot of times filling a pothole is filling a pothole, you know, fixing a sidewalk, fixing a sidewalk. So to make us everyone more efficient, I can pick one of these, we'll pop in a bunch of texts when I hit update and exit. Not only closes out the item on the staff side, but closes the loop with the reporting resident. Hey, the issue you submitted about the tall grass has been closed. Big green tag showing me the status of closed, check mark that says resolution with some text underneath there explaining to them why we're considering this closed out. So it's just an example of your average service flow. Some other things you can do. We do have the concept of internal topics, so types of issues for staff to see and submit when logged in. So we have customers manage internal processes with this, like facilities management. I need my, I need a desk moved. I need a filing cabinet. IT ticketing, really any process y'all might be tracking and managing on a spreadsheet currently is a great candidate of something, you know, to get set up in the system. So you get all the tracking that goes along with it. And then really the last part of this that's super beneficial is the reporting. Once y'all are taking everything in through a central intake, you can use a reporting tool to get useful data out of here. Things like open versus closed by month. So each month, how many items come in? How many get closed? What's our backlog? Good health check. Maybe we want to know which departments have the open items right now. I can go ahead and look. Lot of code enforcement, a lot of public works. Maybe I'll make a plan of attack to chip away at the backlog. And then you can do, these are all, there's a bunch more. These are all standard reports, just ready to go when we build the site for you. But then you could do as much custom reporting as you want. So for example, maybe we're trying to get a feel for our volume of code enforcement complaints, just as a high level example. So I can be like, okay, I want to see for the all of last year, all of the items that we worked on that we would consider like a code compliance complaint. And I'm going to go ahead and enter that. I had two hundred and thirty four items that fit that criteria. Any custom report could be saved so I could use it again. These could all be scheduled. Hey, send this to my inbox with some frequency because the data is important to me. They can all be exported to Excel, or since a lot of what comes through here is very location centric, I might want to know where in the township these are and it'll take this report and represent the vision on a map with pin markers. And sometimes a clustering or lack of clustering, you know, really helps add context to the data that you're looking at. And at a high level, that's how the system works. So in summary, go download the new Wheatland Township app. Number one, all sorts of useful township info at your fingertips. Number two, receive mass alerts and updates. And then number three, easily report and get status updates on problems and concerns. And with that, I'd love to stop talking and open it up if y'all have any questions.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
I had a question on reporting, but you already answered it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, that was my concern as well, just from a FOIA perspective, making sure that we had the ability to export any sort of reports as needed from here.
Totally. And but just along those lines, sir, is we never delete anything. We do unlimited storage for the life of working together. And then even we would take previous data. So if like you guys move forward with this at some point, if you have like, I don't know what you're doing currently, but if you have even like a spreadsheet that has like historical work order info and stuff like that, we could actually port that into the system. So that data would be included in your reports as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um, does this apply to? Well, let me back up a second. So we've got the assessor's office, we've got the township and we've got the highway. Would this be a one price package where we just, everyone?
Yep.
It's different departments. Okay.
Yes, sir. Unlimited usage. We do unlimited staff users, unlimited topics, unlimited remote training, unlimited support. And sir, to your point, sometimes there's departments that they just don't do a ton of like traditional three one one resident facing type of stuff. But maybe internally they use spreadsheets to track certain things like they're a great candidate for some of those internal topics. You know, let's get them set up with a little dashboard of them, put some due dates, they can collaborate with other staff, upload attachments to them. You know, your clerk's office can manage their FOIA requests with this. So there's a lot of other usage you can do. It's a very configurable ticketing system essentially, but slanted towards. But slanted towards government service requests with that location being a key part of it uh for like the physical stuff.
Any additional questions?
Do you have any questions up to the public?
No, sorry, not at this time.
Do we have a cross, Dennis?
Not yet, no.
Yes, um this actually, just my opinion, this would have came in very handy between me and Kevin yesterday. Yeah, Kevin wasn't just available and I went out to check tree situation on that little, in the grass on that little lot, this, this would have this would have helped, would have been able to put in information, you know, talk about some other stuff.
Okay. I think we're all good on our end. Thanks so much, Kevin.
Thank you.
You're communicating with Terry, so we'll go follow up through Terry.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Have a great day, guys. Thanks for having me at the meeting. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh next item on the agenda, approval of resolution number twenty-five dash zero nine dash R. Uh in summary, it's the IGA with the due page township uh for the food pantry. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
I moved.
Second. Margaret, can I get a second, please?
Second, thank you.
Uh no problem. So this is um essentially just an extension of our previous uh food pantry contract. It expired, I think, May one of the yes, they expired May one twenty-five. So this is just extending that contract to May of twenty-nine. No terms uh being changed on here. It's still fifty dollars per month for unlimited use by our residents of the due page township food pantry. Any questions on that? Okay, uh hearing none. Uh we'll go to roll call, please. Trustee Francis?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
To Resa Crowner?
Yes.
All right. On good, uh motion carries uh three oh, next item. Uh resolution number twenty-five dash ten dash R, our intergovernmental agreement with due page township for general assistance management. Can I get a motion to approve?
I have a question.
Yes.
From what I've read, I've read that it's fifty dollars per person for each application. And also we're required to have uh not less than one million dollars per person liability insurance.
Yeah, so um so the fifty dollars what we get is anytime somebody submits a formal application for general or emergency assistance, we pay a basically a fifty dollar case management fee. So I'd say we get anywhere between probably one and maybe four at the high end applications per month for general assistance. And so uh they do all of the case management, all of the follow-up. Uh essentially what they do is they have the software that they actually invest in at due page township. Uh so that it matches with all of the statutory requirements for somebody to be able to qualify. So it tracks all of the data for the individual, they're able to input everything. Um and it kind of spits out the result, whether the individuals are eligible or not eligible and what they are or are not eligible for. Um and then in addition to that, because of their case management, it's their case manager is strictly focused kind of in this space. They also refer them to other programs like LIHE, social, I mean, um ah what is the organization called? Uh just some of the other not-for-profit organizations within the community, within the broader community that can assist the individual, also refers them over to the food pantry and so forth. So they do full case management work on those applications on our behalf. Excuse me, um one of the reasons is that uh as you know, here we are a lighter staff. Right? And so just given the number of applicants that we do get uh or the lack thereof, it it's cost prohibitive for us to go and one, invest in the software, but then also two, uh having our staff go and stay up to date on all of the new uh legislation, all of the new policies, all of the new guidelines when it comes to the general assistance. So because due page township already has somebody taking care of all of that, they're able to do that for us. At a pretty low cost.
Okay, so so it still doesn't explain, if there's an issue, it says public liability insurance is not less than one million dollars per person. Section five.
Uh, let's see, this is
Section five.
Section or section six, public liability insurance?
Yes.
Yeah. So uh it's just kind of follows our general property and casualty and all that. So we just have to make sure that when we're doing that renewals, um that we keep due page township for this instance as a uh named um yeah, also insured for our, for our policy. And it's only going to be specific to the individuals that they see for us if anything happens with those individuals.
Okay. That's it.
Okay, so I think we had the
It's not additional insurance.
Yeah, it's just adding us.
It's also insured.
Exactly. We already carry these sorts of policies on at the township. Very nice cost. Um so I think uh trustee Francis already uh made the motion. Can I get the second? Any additional comments or questions before moving on to the roll call? Hearing none, roll call, please. Trustee Francis?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
With Resa Brown? Yes. Okay, next item, we're actually going to scratch. This is approval resolution number twenty-five dash eleven R, appointment of deputy supervisor. So the initial intent here was to um appoint in uh advance in case anything were to ever happen, uh Mary Francis as deputy supervisor. But uh we legislation recently changed, um essentially now what happens is your senior trustee, which would be you, Ms. Tyson.
That would be me.
You are our senior trustee now.
Do I get a badge?
So should I, uh should an emergency happen, should I be unable to fulfill the duties of supervisor? Um medical leave, anything like that, you would be um the uh immediate interim supervisor. Um and then the board would at that point um be able to call an emergency meeting to formally adopt a deputy supervisor. Um to carry on with the role until um I am able to return.
Okay.
If I'm less than up to not be in a situation where I can uh return. Um and so that, that was the initial intent here. Um but with recent kind of legislative changes, it's not necessary at the moment and um so we'll just kind of scratch that and that will not be a resolution passed. Uh next item on the agenda, approval of ordinance number twenty-five dash zero four dash oh. I'll explain if can I get a motion to approve, please?
Motion?
Motion by Tyson in a second, please.
Second.
Second by Francis. So essentially what this allows us to do is thanks to reach the recent legislation passed in Springfield, we are able to pass on fifty percent of the cost of the salary for the highway commissioner to the highway department. So historically, one hundred percent of that expense would be paid for by the township. So now this just splits it down the middle. So thirty-six thousand will now be paid by the general town fund and thirty-six thousand will be paid by uh the highway department. And then they are able, uh will work in determining which uh of his two funds they wanted to come from, whether it be the special road and bridge or the permanent road fund, I think of the two um that are listed on here.
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah, permanent road, permanent road fund or the corporate road and bridge fund. So that's all this is. Um it just allows us to do that. It doesn't change his compensation. It doesn't change the structure of his compensation or the frequency. All it does is just allows us to do some accounting. What's, any questions on that before we move on to roll call?
Sounds like it has enough money, it has a hundred and twenty-two thousand.
Oh, the
Corporate road or
Yes, yeah. And uh and then the other, so just to give you an idea, I think we're estimating somewhere in the neighborhood of what is about two point two million dollars in total revenues for uh the combined between the two road funds, so.
Yes.
Um just a little bit higher than we have on the town fund side. So with that being said, uh unless we have further questions or comments, we'll move on to roll call. Trustee Francis?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Supervisor Brown? Yes. All right, motion carries three zero. Next item on the agenda, approval of bills and claims. Uh can I get a motion to approve the town and road district fund bill and claims?
So moved.
One second, please.
Second.
All right, uh I know there was a question with regards to um that was previously posted with uh with regards to HR Greens uh item for um uh for I think it was four hundred and forty-six ish thousand dollars. So that's for the resurfacing program for Norman Town Road and for Hags Road. Um so I know that was kind of the, the big line item that, you know, some people were
No connection.
Uh that some people were, were uh concerned about. Um but that's, yeah, so that's part of our regular scheduled program. Any, I'll pull it up here. Any additional questions on the bills before we move on to approval? Okay, hearing none, uh roll call, please. Trustee Francis?
Yes.
Trustee Tyson?
Yes.
Supervisor Crowner?
Yes.
All right, uh we have paid our bills this month, I have roll call three zero. Uh just a reminder, because uh trusty Francis, this is your first time. At the end of the meeting, we're going to have a bill sheet that we just asked you to sign and that's our final formal approval of uh the bills. Uh next item on the agenda is reports. Uh we'll start with Senior Administrator Bill Green.
Uh two things, um if you didn't know, uh we are members of the Plainfield Sherwood Chamber of Commerce. So if you have anything, if you want to look them up and uh go online, see what they're doing, if we can uh be part of any of their programs, we are members of the chamber and they're looking for um ideas of what they can do and what we can do with them. So uh if you, you can just go right on their website and um they have, they put out a bunch of different things and we can be active if we want, so. There's uh, we don't do much hosting. Obviously, the businesses do most of the hosting, but we typically go and I, I go to some of them and you know, show our face and let it, let them know that we're here to help them. Um so uh the other one, um just the other day, we were uh in my office and out of the blue, all of a sudden, my, my computer goes ding and I looked up and finally we got a approval from the, from the passport office in, uh so we are going to become a passport acceptance facility. Um to give you a little bit of information, um the um I was a passport agent over at, at Lisle, so I, I can take the easy test because I already passed it. If we have somebody else, they have to kind of get picked the harder test. I uh it's been a couple years, so I'm going to want to go to the, the train, the training's all free and stuff, but I even went on to Chicago for the day and they take you through everything and make sure that you do things right. Um as far as what, what does it do for us, other than obviously have a program that is in desperate need around here with our, with our public, there is also revenue from it. Um Wild Township uh has a budget of revenue of twenty-five thousand dollars. Hanover Township, Hanover's a little different, but everyone, you might want to, you might want to go take a tour if you've never been to Hanover Township. Hanover Township is like its own little planet. Their budget for uh passport revenue is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And that's, that's their take. That's what they're getting from the, the federal government to do passports. That's the share that goes, no, you gotta pay your staff, but I'm already here, so I'll be a passport agent and anybody else can be, uh if they're, if they're employees or appointed officials can be a passport agent, you just have to go to the training. It's uh, it's, it's really kind of neat to do. It's just, uh so we don't, we don't have much of an outlay other than staff and we're already here. So there's no reason to not become a passport acceptance facility. If you've ever tried to get your passport over here at the little post office, they do it all wrong. I mean, I, I, I did it at Lisle. Um they do it while you're in line next to people. Um I actually took a picture where both agents up at the front desk were doing passports while the line was backing up to get postage out the front door. Um it should take fifteen to twenty minutes to do a single passport and they were doing them in five. So they weren't uh asking all the questions and things that are required of a passport agent to ask uh for information to make sure that the person is really who they say they are and, and all that kind of stuff. Um so it is part of uh what we do and we'll be thrilled to do it. Ms. Tyson, it looks like you have a question.
Well, I've seen them in action and they look like they knew what they were doing. I had mine done at the post office and they were very efficient. I did it. We had, had an appointment, we got a passport, we were in and out.
Yeah, it's supposed to be in a, it's supposed to be in a separate room away from everybody else. But right off the bat is number one, and they do them at the corner.
Yeah.
I know. Naperville Post Office, you go in a
Yeah, you go in a different room. That's, that's required. And I took a couple pictures and sent them to the pad and they didn't realize that it was like, like that at all, because the person next to you is listening to all this information.
So where will you do it here?
Probably my office. Um and or, I mean, it, it could be in here as well. This is, this is quiet enough. This is not in the, in the public. I mean, this room is basically empty during the day.
Yeah.
So I mean, we could do it here too. If somebody came in with, with a family or something, if it's just a single individual, it could be in here, it could be in there. It just depends on the day. Uh the, the assessor's office might be doing something in here, we go there. Um it's not, it's not in line at the post office.
A logistics question, so they are going to be coming through the front door?
We'll have to figure that out.
There's only one way for them to come in.
Well, they can come in the other side. The Carolinas, they can go through Carolyn's side if they need to. Or through the side door, they need to. If they're coming through this way is not okay.
Having people to deal with, so.
I just want to say, uh this is happening thanks to the persistence by our senior administrator. He's been trying to get this to happen for the township, knowing that it can be a way not just to generate revenue, but also just to bring awareness to the township, because we know not a lot of people even realize we're here. So this is an opportunity to bring people here and they start realizing what we are, who we are and what we do. Um and I think that's a good thing. Um but also, uh again, his persistence, he's been working on getting us this approval since fall of twenty-two, uh when he started here. Um and checking very routinely. And I was actually sitting next to him the day where he finally got the email approval um to, to allow us to become a, a passport facility. So very excited uh to add that. And uh and we'll see what, what that means for the township over the next fiscal year. But thank you, Bill.
Well, thank you.
Thanks.
But once it goes on the website, you're going to get a flood of people.
It's okay. Well, we can do by appointment as well. And that way it, you know, but it gets where they're waiting in line, whatever they can pull up and
Yeah.
They could, you know, we can make it, they can call, call ahead and whatever. So, you know, I'm in the, I'm in, I, I have a one o'clock appointment, I'm in the parking lot.
They can make the appointment on the app.
Mm-hmm. There we go.
And as far as, as Hanover Township, if you haven't ever been to Hanover Township and you'd like a tour of, of Hanover Township, they'll be happy to take you through the seven buildings and the senior center and the, and the bar and everything that's there and the medical unit as well. They have a medical unit there as well.
Next item, uh or I'm sorry, does that conclude your report?
Yeah, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
Well, guess what? I'm going to Hanover Township for my training, the official training, the lead is over, I'm going there.
It'll probably, it'll probably be in the training, it'll probably be in the training room.
It's in the bar, isn't it?
Don't forget the bar. Yes, it's senior center.
Senior centers.
Yeah.
How cool is that?
There we go.
Margaret, we got a date.
Uh next up for reports is Assessor Mary Katsberg.
Okay, first I'd like to mention that unfortunately, the audio portion of the last meeting was not recording. I think it was red now that I'm seeing. Hopefully it's recording tonight.
It's.
The problem was trying to recreate the minutes and I know you had to do the best you could, but it's not all anything that I could go back and hear. Um I wanted to, well, now the trustees are here. I want to thank you for consideration regarding the assessor's budget. I would like to state that my issue is with the supervisor taking it upon himself to determine that the assessor's budget should be reduced. As per Illinois statutes, the assessor creates and presents the budget to the entire board. The board of trustees may review and amend as a whole. The supervisor is not to revise the budget. The supervisor has one vote in the process. These are the issues at hand. The supervisor had my budget. End of day, January thirtieth. No questions or comments were ever addressed to me. I found out that the budget was being reduced by looking at an email sent late on May twenty-first, the day before the meeting. Again, no mention of a change from my three hundred and thirty thousand to three hundred thousand. In contrast, just to point this out, the supervisor's budget is increasing seventy thousand to four hundred and twenty thousand. The highway department is crease, increasing fifty thousand to five hundred and fifty thousand. And here we are holding up the rear, bringing in all Holding up the rear, bringing in all the money. Assessor twenty thousand to three hundred thousand instead of fifty thousand to three hundred and thirty thousand. And I wanted to just comment also regarding the pay and regarding where people are. They don't stop at a line in the Walgreens parking lot to say, oh, I'm in DuPage County and step in back into Will County. It is gonna be a circular situation where you're gonna look at what you're close to. We bump into Naperville Township, uh where. They're in six figures for the deputies. I know Scott, he's the, I think he might be the chief deputy uh commercial. He's awesome. Uh Lyle Township. Chief uh deputy, I think a hundred and twenty-four thousand. As we go township, now I'd say of all these, we're the most similar to them. Are they in Kendall? Yes, but you tell me in Amber Fields. Where that line is because we share Amber Fields with Kendall County as we go township. So that's what makes this not right to just go into Will County, we gotta stay in Will County. Will County goes all the way to Indiana guys, as we know. So um I would say they're the most similar. There are three deputies are at eighty-eight. This is now, and I will say, this is twenty twenty-three numbers. Because that's what I was using at the time. Um eighty-eight thousand, eighty-one thousand, five hundred and nineteen, seventy-nine thousand, four sixty-one. Uh DuPage Township, I know again in twenty twenty-three, uh one of the gals that was there thirty years and retired now was making ninety-eight thousand. Now, in similarity too, you have to look at the amount of parcels that we have. And also the location of where we are. We're in Naperville, folks. It's a busy area. We have lots of visitors. So what I'm saying is, um and again, this is twenty twenty-three. I think Julie had a few more parcels than we did. But we now, I think it's thirty-two thousand, four forty-eight. We have added a thousand parcels. In the last couple of years, we're probably gonna, I'm not sure what it is this year, maybe another thousand, because as you can see everywhere around us. There's construction, any piece of land, the polo club, they even annexed it into Naperville. Um so that is what I'm saying and I've tried to point this out before that. The T O I, who Carrie wrote the book, says that. The duty, and this was a, this was from the webinar, right? So. Cause I thought, well, I better learn how to do this and I better know what I'm talking about as far as the budget and what my rights are. So last year I took a webinar and uh this is part of it and I can provide that if anybody wants it. I'm sure they wouldn't mind me copying this. Uh so I was able to be on there and ask questions as well. So they're talking about budget. The township budget can be adopted another day. This is to go on. The road district, I think, happens at the hearing. Uh this is going on about budget should not be adopted at annual township meeting, et cetera. Then it says. Board of Trustees can make changes to road district budget. As an elected officer, commissioner should be given the resources to carry out his responsibilities. If budget cuts are made to road district budget, when resources are available, the board may have faced a lawsuit. Same is true with the assessors. Just wanted to put that out there. That's my conclusion.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, uh Highway Commissioner Benton.
Hey, folks. First of all, I just wanna start off with um Paul Marquardt, who's in the highway department. Uh he's celebrating his thirtieth year today, so hopefully he's at home and truly celebrating thirty years of being with Wheatley Township. Going out, yeah, um he wasn't too thrilled about it when we were talking today. Everybody was kind of razzing him a little bit. So um I'm glad that the the resident made a comment that I was on my phone. Uh the highway foreman is on vacation, so we're working through that. He still does not. Put his phone down and constantly works while he's on vacation. I don't know how much of a vacation that really is, uh but I was. Uh having a conversation with the crew about scheduling for projects for a resident that I went out and assessed the property and did some work on the property today. So yesterday, there was an accident on Royal Ford Call in St. Anne. Uh we ended up. Paul ended up going out there and helping to clean up and assist with the fire department. The, there was some teenagers or teenagers slash twenty-something year olds that ended up hitting a mailbox and a tree. And probably totally in the vehicle, but there was a lot of debris all over the road, so I wanna commend the crew for going. A quick response and getting out there and cleaning it up. I was talking to multiple residents throughout the day uh when that was happening. Uh after speaking with the residents, they said that this is, this has been an ongoing issue on uh Royal Ford Call about. Speeding and issues with uh property damage as they're cutting through. So I spoke to them about speed mitigations. Uh today I talked to uh the Chief Vito Bonomo, Vito Bonomo. Um he's with Plainfield uh Fire Protection District. And we were talking about the accident and speed mitigations. We're gonna be working together to try to come up with some type of solution for the residents there. Want to make sure that the residents are safe. And um just been going out and. Clearing up some of the issues that are out there with residents, going out to their properties, uh responding to communications with them to try to make sure that we get the the best solutions for them. Uh along with working with the crews and trying to figure out, get our flows since I'm coming in and seems to be going very well. I've spent a lot of time with them and we're constant communication to try to find out how we can do things the best possible way the first time. And the safest way possible to. We wanna make sure that all those guys in the crew end up going home the way they came in, so. Um as was talked about earlier, Norman Town Road and Hags, the project. Happy to say that that was roughly a hundred nine thousand dollars under original estimates. So that that project came in, you know, very, very, very uh comparable. And ended up going out to Hags and Norman Town and taking a look at the project. It's, they did a great job. So that was Geneva Construction. That was kudos to them and kudos to the crew for overseeing that. And that's about it. We're gonna be working on some other things coming up, working on some other projects. Uh work through the state budget. And uh happy to say that we we have money coming, so we are, we're gonna be in a really good spot. Part of that is with the high-reach salary. Uh we are working towards having a surplus, which is a good thing, so we can start working on more projects for some of the things that have been delayed. From previous administrations because of budgets and and just kind of picking the can because the money wasn't there, so. We wanna make sure that we can put that back into the community. And any questions? So.
Thanks, Nick.
Alright, thank you. Uh moving on to trustee comments, trustee Francis.
Uh I have been busy getting oriented to this work. Uh last week I did the T O I training. I did my FOIA training and I did my O M A training and this week I did. Preventing sexual harassment training. I. And we're going to elected official training.
Yes, yes.
And so and Angel and I have been um getting a time set to get the environmental advisory committee going.
Perfect.
That's it.
Thank you. Trustee Glowiak and Klein are not here today. Uh trustee Tyson.
Thank you. I I read the minutes and I saw that it's your special meeting. It's official that I am the chair of the senior committee. Thank you very much. And with that, we've had several meetings. Bonnie is here today. She comes to the meeting. She participates, Bonnie. So uh we uh we had our meeting the first Wednesday this month. And we're gonna have a senior luncheon the Thursday, Wednesday of this month, which is the eighteenth at the Woodland Salem. Uh church. That'll be our last meeting at that church and our best speaker is going to be A R P and they're gonna do, the subject is gonna be fraud. Which is a hot topic for all people now. So it should be probably probably be a really good presentation. And then next month, July, we're gonna meet at the Lutheran Hallelujah Church on a hundred and fourth and Book Road. We're gonna meet there. That'll be our new spot and we'll make sure that people who participate. Our, we'll tell them at the meeting at our luncheon and also they'll get something in the emails as well. That concludes my report.
Alright, thank you.
If you don't mind, on another note, the, there is a property tax fraud alert that you can sign up for. Will County, actually many counties in Illinois. It'll tell someone something's being recorded. Uh for instance, there was a woman that lost her house. Her daughter had her signed something and it was quit claim. Claimed it and went to the daughter and she got a shippey injury to notarize it. So. That's um I think you just Google, I saw somebody.
Well, you know what, uh our, our Will County clerk has that and he's been signing to that. Yeah, she could, she's been pushing that. So that's another thing that.
We had that at a meeting last year.
Yes.
Oh, we had a listen from Julia come.
Recorder was there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And recorder. We had very sort of demonstration of it.
Won't stop on your toes, but the recorder has a brochure to be able to get out.
I know, I know personally I can. So, yeah, she talks about that when she comes to our meetings.
It's a really good thing.
Yeah.
And the other counties have it too. I had a call from a relative in the county and they have it too, so.
Hey, alert you, anytime something happens to.
Yep, and it works because I I bought a new place. I was in DuPage County.
One of the other things that I can offer, um I can help you with the secretary of state to do a senior mobile D M B. So they can get signed up for real I D, renew their license, whatever driver certification. It works pretty well and they, they're typically chopping up the bit to try to settle these events. It's like, it makes it so much easier than having them at the D M B and. Gives them a little bit more time for seeing.
Okay, we'll look into that for office.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Awesome. I didn't know they did that.
Mm-hmm. I'm working on trying to get a uh full service senior D M B, either in Plainfield or Naperville. Completely dedicated to seniors.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you for the info. Thank you.
Uh next up on reports, uh Clerk Terry Jones.
Uh we had three FOIAs, the one outstanding left. We haven't gotten one for us, so. That's it.
Alright, and then I'm pulling it up, just bear with me one moment. Our uh tax collector said he was unable to attend today. Do you recall what he said as far as how many burials? I think he.
Yeah, one, one just recently, yeah.
One casket burial, I believe, and that's since our last regular meeting. Um and then as far as reports, I guess, I know you all are signed up, but just reminders that there are multiple new elected official trainings. We have one from T O I, Township Official of Illinois, and then we have one from the Metropolitan Townships Association. Um so make sure you look at that. Um there was a question earlier that I just wanted to. Uh speak on with regards to the timing of the budget. Uh in Janu- I believe it was either in January or February. Uh the previous board indicated that they wanted to allow the new incoming board to make the decisions on the budget. And so that was the reason that we waited until uh shortly after the newly elected officials were sworn in. To have uh a special meeting for the budget, so. That um is that, and again, I just wanna say thank you, Bill, for the passport facility. I just. I know how hard he worked to make that happen.
Still working on it.
He's working on it, but I know how hard he's worked on that and uh I'm excited to see, see that uh come to fruition, so. With that, I'll conclude my report and I will entertain, yes.
Um just a quick thing on the training. June seventeenth, and one of the things I forgot to mention, June seventeenth training in Naperville, you went down to Springfield, right? For that training or virtual?
No, I didn't do that training. I was gonna do the seventeenth, but now I'm gonna be out of town, so that's why I'm doing the twenty-first instead.
Uh I'll be there at the June seventeen training in Naperville, Naperville, twenty-first and handover.
Yeah, so the twen- uh seventeenth, that's the T O I one.
Yeah.
And then the handover on the twenty-first is the M T.
Yes.
So, oh, um I guess just quickly as a reminder for everybody before um the budget hearing. For final approval of the budget is scheduled for June twenty-sixth at seven thirty P M. And then our next regular board meeting is July tenth at seven thirty P M. So now with that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
What was the uh, what's the next, June seventeenth?
June twenty-sixth in the budget hearing, July tenth is a regular.
I have a question before you both.
Yes, oh, yes.
That's your personal projector?
That, yeah, that is a projector that was loaned to us for the night. That is not mine, nor does it belong to the township.
Okay, cause when we move over, the seniors move their luncheon to Hallelujah, the Lutheran Church. They do not have a smart board.
Okay.
So we're gonna need a projector.
Okay, one of the things we can look at, and I can try to schedule it out if uh if it works, but I know some of the libraries loan out projectors as well. So that might be.
Yes.
A route we take if needed.
Okay.
I know Plainfield Library has it and I believe Bowling Berkeley U S D, I'm not sure if Ninety-Fifth Street has one or not.
I have a library required for.
And there you go.
And we could probably ask IATA, all the township administrators, if anybody could loan one.
Yeah, absolutely, so. So then with that being said, uh we had the the first on the motion to adjourn and the second, please.
Second.
Alright, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oppose? Alright, motion is adjourned at eight forty-four P M. Thank you, everyone. Oh, I'm sorry, don't forget to sign the uh bill document, please.
You wanna go ahead and turn off the recording?
Coming up for the um.